The superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to our retirees on their contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of their retirement. So first, I'll start with our custodians. Alfonso Velez retired from the Williams Middle School Complex as a custodian after more than 19 years. Security guards. Patricia Powder retired from the Mary C. Burke Complex as a security guard after more than 12 years. David Fadetti retired from Chelsea High School as a security guard after more than 20 years. Next are nurses aides. Andrea Rodriguez will retire as the John Silver Early Learning Center's nurses aide after more than 21 years. Maria Porras will retire as a district nurses aide after more than 20 years. Next is our data management specialists. Blanca Gomez retired from the Parent Information Center after more than 22 years. Next are our principal account clerks. Maria Ardagna retired from the Chelsea Public Schools Business Office after more than nine years. Our paraprofessionals. Maureen Levinson retired from the Wright Science and Technology Academy after more than 34 years. Shelley Olivatis retired from the John Silver Early Learning Center after more than 27 years. Our teachers. Carol Resnick retired from Chelsea High School after more than 27 years as an English teacher. Catherine Fullgate retired from the John Silver Early Learning Center after more than 23 years. Gail Witty will retire from the Brown Middle School after more than 21 years. Mary Valentine will retire from the Brown Middle School after more than 23 years. Antonieta Tora retired from the John Silver Early Learning Center after more than 32 years. Pamela Frantum retired from the Hooks and Sakolowski School after more than 13 years. Andrea Coniff will retire from the John Silver Early Learning Center after more than 34 years. And Maria Perkins will retire from the Berkowitz Elementary School after more than 24 years. From our assistant principals. Monica Caporelli will retire as assistant principal at the Berkowitz School after more than four years. And from our managers. Maria Acosta will retire as assistant business manager for payroll after more than 29 years. We wish all our retirees the best of luck and happiness on your retirement. Okay, and now I'd like to present our Outstanding Service Award presented to Buildings and Grounds Department with deep appreciation and gratitude for the instrumental role played by the Buildings and Grounds Department during unprecedented times throughout the pandemic. Your work and dedication was vital in keeping our schools running. Chelsea Public Schools thanks you. Thank you for the hard work.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. It was a great team effort. We have a great team of Buildings and Grounds. Really proud of, so just happy things to get back to.
The Outstanding Service Award is now presented to Airmark Chelsea Food Service with deep appreciation and gratitude for the instrumental role played by the Chelsea Food Services during unprecedented times throughout the pandemic. Your work and dedication was vital in keeping our schools running. Chelsea Public Schools would like to thank you, and we're so grateful. Thank you so much, you guys, for all that you've done. And then I don't know if I can ask my other one? Thank you! And our Outstanding Service Award is presented to Chelsea Public Schools Technology Department with deep appreciation and gratitude for the instrumental role played by the CPS Technology Department during unprecedented times throughout the pandemic. Your work and dedication was vital in keeping our schools running. We want to thank you from Chelsea Public Schools and just recognize your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Whereas Dr. Barbara Curl Sinclair has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over 26 years. And whereas Dr. Curl Sinclair has been a dedicated director of adult learning since 1995 at the Intergenerational Literacy Program with Chelsea Public Schools. And whereas Dr. Curl Sinclair has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. And whereas Dr. Curl Sinclair has conducted her responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism. And whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedications to the youth and adult learners of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Dr. Curl Sinclair on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of her retirement. Congratulations, Dr. Barbara Curl Sinclair. We're so glad and so grateful.
Thank you so much. It has been a true joy to be part of the community of Chelsea, and I am very grateful to the Chelsea Public Schools that this program continues on. So thank you.
Our Outstanding Service Award is presented to Sarah Kent with deep appreciation of the service and care given to the students, families, and faculty of Chelsea Public Schools. Your commitment and dedication have been instrumental in staying true to our mission and values as a school community. Chelsea Public Schools would like to say thanks to Ms. Sarah Kent for her dedication and hard work and just all the years that she has spent in Chelsea Public Schools. Sarah, we will miss you greatly.
Thank you.
So congratulations.
Thank you. For me, I should. Thank you very much.
And now I turn it over to our Chelsea School Principals to present the Student of the Year Awards from each of our schools. Congratulations to our amazing and resilient students. Well, we're very happy to be here to present Brianna Gregorian with our Student of the Year Award for the Berkowitz School. We're going to have Ms. Sugg say a few words, and then we'll present the award.
Good afternoon, everyone. This year has tested teachers and students in ways we could have never anticipated. And today it's my honor to speak about a student of ours who has single-handedly brought comfort, life, and community into our virtual space. Brianna Gregorian's warmth and conscientiousness radiate through our collective computer screens every day. Her voice brings thoughtfulness and attention into our class. She constantly has others on her mind, noticing the smallest details that make each of her classmates important. Brianna is the definition of a reader, someone who pours over books for knowledge and enjoyment. Her creative nature draws her to fantastical worlds like Harry Potter and The Power of Poetry. She routinely volunteers to read out loud, even books she's found on her own that she thinks we will all enjoy. And we drop everything to sit and listen. Reading and writing are Brianna's true loves, but she brings the same determination to her math, rising as a top student with brave questions and nonstop focus. In this year, when it's been easy to wonder if what we're doing is truly working, Brianna's feedback and smiles have made it all worthwhile. There have been moments when I've gotten emotional thinking about what it would be like to teach Brianna in class, in person. And in thinking of the growth she's made and others have too, all while miles away from their teachers, I am quickly grounded. We will be forever grateful for the light that you bring, Brianna, and that you've brought to our lives this year. And we're certain that you will continue to brighten other people's lives wherever life takes you. So thank you and congratulations. And congratulations to the Gregorian family.
So Brianna, we now present you with the Student of the Year Award for the Berkowitz Elementary School. We couldn't be happier that you're representing us.
Hello, I am principal of the Hooks Elementary School, and we are so excited to be here today to present Mario Vargas Torres, the Student of the Year from the Hooks School. I have with me his amazing teacher, Ms. Michaela O'Neil, who's going to give us some words about how fabulous Mario has been.
Good afternoon. I am so proud to present Mario with the Hooks 2021 Student of the Year. This year, Mario is a fourth grader and a member of an Ola or online learning classroom. Mario has truly been the glue to our class since the first day of school. In a fully remote year, Mario has built a personal relationship with every member of our classroom. And on an online setting, this is truly remarkable. Whether he is in a Zoom room of nearly 30 students or in a breakout room of two, Mario always makes his classmates feel seen, heard, and understood. He remembers details of his classmates' lives and teachers, and is always making connections to his learning and the experiences of his peers. As we have transitioned through the reopening process and remained in an Ola classroom, Mario is kept positive and welcomes his 11 new classmates with open arms. He is dependable, thoughtful, and has the most infectious laugh that can brighten the most challenging of days. Although Mario works remotely from a variety of locations, he is always prepared, camera on, and ready to learn. Mario has made impressive academic gains this year, and he has learned how to be a strong advocate for himself. In addition, he has become our class tech whiz. When his classmates are struggling with their Chromebooks, he's the first to offer his assistants to walk them through step-by-step directions on how to solve their tech troubles. I really don't know what I would do without him. After April break, I unfortunately had to take a leave for a few weeks. Every day, his powder would give me the highs and lows of every day. It was no surprise to me that Mario was constantly flexible, supportive, kind, and knowledgeable for his substitute teachers and classmates. You didn't know this at the time, Mario, but that made me so proud. You really kept our 301A ship afloat. Finally, when I asked Mario's classmates why he was so deserving of this award, they energetically responded, "Mario is kind, helpful. He is always caring with his friends." The reason Mario deserves to be the Student of the Year is because he has worked so hard. He has always been so respectful, and he is so funny. We love you, Mario. Mario has been such a bright light in the Hooks School during his time here, and he couldn't be more deserving of this award. His new middle school classmates and teachers will be privileged to have him. We really wish you the best, Mario. Thank you, and thank you to Mario's family for their support and encouragement throughout this difficult school year. Thank you.
As you can see, as you can hear, this award is obviously appropriate for Mario. So Mario, I'd like to present you with a certificate, Student of the Year for the Hooks Elementary School, and a $25 Barnes &amp; Nobles gift card. All right, congratulations, sir. We'll get an elbow there. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Brittany Hickson, fourth grade teacher at the Kelly School.
I am Gerson Enriquez Bustillo.
And I'm Lisa Laimer, the principal of the Kelly School, and we are here to celebrate Gerson as the Kelly School's Student of the Year.
With great honor, I would like to present Student of the Year for the Kelly School to Gerson Alexander Enriquez Bustillo. Throughout your Kelly School career, Alexander has consistently demonstrated integrity, determination, and respect. Gerson's dedication to learning and his drive to push himself to his absolute best is truly inspiring. He has shown strength in being self-aware of his learning by asking clarifying questions to help guide his understanding, using resources to strengthen his work, and reflecting on his progress. Although this has been a stressful and unusual year, Alexander has come to class each day focused on building connections with his teachers and classmates, soaking up as much knowledge as he can get, and making his parents proud. Not only did he grow in all areas, but he's also shown grace while navigating new websites, showing patience with internet connection issues, and cooperating and helping a great leader with his classmates in breakout rooms. Alexander, with your kind heart, creative soul, and love of learning, I know you will continue to flourish. Congratulations. We are so proud of you.
En este honor por su familia y otros, es con gran amor mi querida presentar al estudiante del año de la escuela Kelly a Gerson Alexander Enriquez Bustillo. A lo largo de su carrera en la escuela Kelly, Gerson ha demostrado constantemente integridad, determinación, y respeto. La dedicación de Gerson al aprendizaje y su impulso para esforzarse al máximo es realmente inspirador. Ha demostrado fortaleza para ser consciente de sí mismo de su aprendizaje, al hacer preguntas, aclaratorias para ayudar a que su comprensión utilice sus recursos para fortalecer su trabajo y reflexionar sobre su profesión. Aunque este ha sido un año ex-estresante y inusual, Gerson ha venido a clase todos los días enfocado a establecer conexiones con sus maestros y compañeros, absorbiendo todo el conocimiento que puede y enorgulleciendo a sus padres. No solo presionó en todas las áreas, sino que también mostró gracia mientras navegaba por nuevos sitios web, mostraba paciencia con la conexión a internet, y cooperaba con sus compañeros de clase. Gerson, con tu corazón bondadoso, alma primitiva y amor por el aprendizaje, sé que continuará floreciendo. Felicite las acciones, Gerson. Todos estamos muy orgullosos de ti.
Certificate, Student of the Year for the Kelly Elementary School. This is your 21. And along with that, this Barnes &amp; Nobles Award to join your jersey of success. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Can we turn around so that we can see it again? Congratulations, Gerson.
Hello, I'm Nate Myers, principal of the Sakolowski School, and we're so proud to introduce our Student of the Year, Joshua Lon Juarez, and his teacher, Michaela Fairman, has some wonderful words to read about him.
Joshua is an incredibly hard worker in my class. I am so excited to say that he's the Student of the Year for the 2020-2021 school year. With all the challenges that students have faced this year, Joshua has demonstrated perseverance. He pushed through the obstacles of remote learning each and every day. He was always the first one to log on to Zoom in the morning with a smiling face. He would complete his work to the best of his ability and even go above and beyond. Whenever Joshua finished his work, he would check it over twice or even three times before submitting it. Joshua always shows respect towards his teachers, classmates, and any person that he encounters. Not only is Joshua a hard worker on his own, but he is a student that is respectful, helpful, and caring towards his classmates and peers. When working with partners or in a small group, Joshua is understanding and supportive. He thinks the best about everyone and knows that he can help them to be their personal best. Positive, intelligent, supportive, and family-oriented, that is how I would describe Joshua. He handles every assignment with a cheerful demeanor and is always willing to add a little extra to his work to make it as best as possible. He is always willing to learn, and we all appreciate his enthusiasm for our school. Joshua gets right to work and puts in his best effort. He helps those around him and is a great leader in my class. Joshua takes pride in his achievements and happily shares them with his family. As we transitioned into in-person learning, Joshua's qualities were highlighted and emphasized even more. When working with his small group for region's research, Joshua was always patient and understanding. He often would write on a whiteboard to help his partners be able to take accurate notes that they found together in the text. If he saw that someone was stuck on a word, he would read the word aloud or even spell it so the student could type it on their Chromebook. In every block of the day, Joshua does his best work and helps others to reach their full potential too. I am incredibly proud of Joshua, and it's been a pleasure to be his fourth grade teacher. I admire him so much in all that he does for others as well as for himself. Joshua emulates what it means to be a true friend and a determined student. I cannot express how happy I am that he was named Student of the Year. Congratulations to you, Joshua, and I hope that you never change who you are. Your light will continue to shine through in all of your adventures. I am elated that I have this opportunity to honor you with this award and to have been your teacher for your last year at the Sakolowski School.
Congratulations, Joshua, for getting your award. And we're so proud of you. You made us all very proud, okay? Good job. Nice job, buddy.
Hello, good evening. My name is Linda Barber, and I am principal of the Brown Middle School. It's my great pleasure tonight to present our Student of the Year, Brandon Osa Barrientos. And I'd like to tell you some things about him before I present him with his award. Brandon has demonstrated immense growth during his time at the Brown, despite a very difficult year of online learning. He's an extremely motivated student who asks questions, advocates for himself, helps his classmates, and comes to class prepared and engaged. In the middle of this school year, he faced a difficult transition, moving from foundational hour classes to transitional hour class in the middle of this year and in the middle of instructional units in many, many subject areas. In a few classes, he even switched teachers. And he did this without the support of his English Language Development teacher, Megan Marhillo, who was on maternity leave. He has fit seamlessly into his new class environment and emerged a leader in that classroom as well, while still maintaining relationships with students in his old home room. In both ELA and history, he was able to jump in mid-year lit. He took initiative to get caught up and produced stellar five paragraph essays in both classes. In math, Brandon has consistently pushed his whole class forward. He embraces challenges, explains his reasoning to others, and works diligently on problems. Brandon is also an amazing artist and challenges himself with new techniques on drawing subjects. Finally, Brandon was the only student at the Brown Middle School this year who transitioned between hour classrooms. That's a very big accomplishment during our times of remote learning. He is a pretty special and unique young man, and he deserves our Student of the Year Award. Brandon, I want to shake your hand presenting you this award and a gift card for Barnes &amp; Noble.
Good evening, I'm Mike Tavon. I'm the principal of the Morris H. Segal Clark Avenue Middle School. We are so happy to announce our Student of the Year this year, Sarah Ruth McCaskill, and her teacher, who's been fortunate enough to have her for the last two years. Anne Boyd is going to read a letter.
It is truly an honor to be able to present the Morris H. Segal Clark Avenue Middle School Student of the Year Award to Sarah Ruth McCaskill. I have had the distinct pleasure of being part of Sarah Ruth's educational journey. I know I can speak for all members of Clark Avenue when I say that Sarah has impressed us with her ability to work hard, grow as a learner, and encourage others. One of Sarah's most admirable qualities is her desire to help others. In fact, there has never been a time that Sarah Ruth was not willing to help another student. She will not only share her knowledge with classmates, but genuinely cares about the student's understanding of the topic. Sarah makes sure that other students she is helping don't just get the correct answer, but takes the time to help students understand how to do the work that leads to the answer. She exemplifies leadership and has been the student that teachers turn to because we know she will be welcoming and helpful to all students. Sarah may not know this, but there have been many conversations amongst her teachers about what a great teacher she could be one day. Sarah Ruth is not only an extremely caring and generous student, she is driven and committed to her academia. She has achieved the great honor of earning honor roll every quarter of every year during her middle school career. There has never been a time that Sarah Ruth hasn't demonstrated her desire to learn. Her curiosity and growth mindset are characteristics that are truly a pleasure to have in the classroom. You will be hard pressed to find Sarah Ruth without a book in her hands or in the queue of one of our online platforms. She is an avid reader who has definitely kept our librarian, Ms. Jaber, busy with her book requests. Although Sarah clearly loves to read, she also has an exceptional desire for civics. In her eighth grade civics class, she has demonstrated a lot of excitement for being civically engaged in the Chelsea community. She is excited to apply her historical thinking skills to address issues around COVID and health in Chelsea community, going above and beyond by asking thoughtful questions and talking to multiple community members to gather information. We are so excited to see how she would use community research to implement an informed action within her community. In addition to her stellar academic career, she is also well-known for her artistic abilities, specifically her still life drawings. Not only is she artistically talented, she often regales us with her tales of her baking experiences that we all hope she will share with us one day. She has been a member of our theater group, where again, her continuously fostered an inclusive learning environment for all diverse learning groups. Outside of her scholastic pursuits, Sarah Ruth is also an active member of her community as a whole. She is a youth leader at her church, has helped to run the nursery, and has been a junior counselor at a summer camp. It is without a doubt that Sarah Ruth deserves this honorable award. We are so proud of her, and we cannot wait to see what she does with her bright future. Congratulations.
So our Student of the Year this year is Aiman Savani. As far as the WSTA Wolf Pack goes, As far as the WSTA Wolf Pack goes, Ayman really needs no introduction. He has been with us since fifth grade, always smiling, always chatting with his teachers, and always being a good friend to his classmates. We're going to really miss you in the office next year. This past year has been hard on all of us and a totally new way of teaching and learning. But Ayman's teachers have all been impressed with how much he has thrived. Over the summer, he was messaging Mr. Wildai and I, and we got the chance to go visit him during our sidewalk walk visits and even meet his little sister. Ayman never let the pandemic keep him from connecting and doing his best. He came to remote learning with a smile and a willingness to engage. I can't tell him enough how much we will miss him, but know that he will be an amazing addition to Phoenix next year and wherever he goes. I still remember it like it was yesterday. He was part of a team of students who helped to plant new trees outside of our school, and he was so excited that the city not only listened to his letters, but responded. And I remember you digging in that dirt. That tree now has strong roots here, and so does Ayman. We will miss him dearly, but know that he's going to do great things. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Kent. I'm filling in for Principal Martino. This year's CHS Student of the Year is Richard Flores. In his time at CHS, Richard has accomplished a great many things. In addition to being president of the National Honor Society, Richard is the vice president of the senior class. He is also a multi-sport athlete and is currently maintaining a GPA of over 4.6. Wow. Richard is truly a well-rounded student who CHS is proud to call one of its own. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ron Schmidt and the principal of Chelsea Opportunity Academy, representing our staff in introducing our Student of the Year. This student, Morris Tejada, came to us as an overaged, undercredited student having dropped out of high school. He struggled early, often taking on the behaviors of younger students and struggling to stay focused at school. Getting him to come to school was a challenge. His work as a chef often went late into the night, and by the time he would get home, he was tired knowing that the next day would be another workday when he woke up. The challenges he faced between schoolwork, learning to speak English, and outside competing priorities of school often left him frustrated and ready to give up. Relentless outreach efforts kept him in communication, and at times, that was all we could do. Then something happened. He started coming to school and doing work online. He could see the little efforts were adding up to getting work completed and completing courses. He found motivation and the desire to finish his work and fight for his diploma. His English skills reached new levels and he found more confidence to practice. He fought through the struggles of geometry with relentless determination. He delivered one of the most inspirational senior capstone presentations we have ever observed. All of this while working full-time and supporting Ashley, his four-year-old daughter. He is truly a student who represents our core values, and that is why Morris Tejada was selected as the COA Student of the Year. Thank you.